Good evening. Welcome to the Troy City Council meeting for May 9th, the regular meeting. Pastor Dan Lewis from the Troy Christian Chapel was to be with us this evening, but I don't see him in attendance, so I will ask our Mayor Pro Tem, Mary Kerwin, to give us an invocation. That will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Let us pray. Lord God, in you discover infinite possibilities. May sincere prayer lead to determined action. May those who are doubtful or cynical be renewed in patriotism. May those who feel powerless look within for deeper strength. May those who are most sensitive and loving find authentic ways to express themselves. May those filled with complaints learn satisfying dialogue in another. May those caught in dependencies or compulsions be freed. May those overwhelmed with complexity take one step forward. May those with limited resources build upon personal gifts. May those who think themselves incapable be supportive and encourage others. May those who believe deeply discern signs that dreams do come true and prayers are answered. Lord, may a whole new generation uncover creative responses to that ever-present challenge. Ask not what your country can do for you, but what you can do for your country. In this we pray. Amen.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Kerwin. May we have the roll call, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Schilling.
Here.
Councilmember Beltrameen.
Here.
Fleming.
Here.
Harlack.
Here.
Kerwin.
Here.
McGuinness.
Here.
Slater.
Here.
I'm present. This evening, we have no special presentations or certificates of recognition, no carryover items or public hearings, so we go right to public comment. And as promised, I am going to call upon those that filled out the green card at the last meeting, that they would be first, and then I will call on the others. And at that time, remember that this is on items that are on the agenda or not on the The first one that signed up is Janice Daniels. So Janice, would you come forward? And since we have so many people tonight, I am going to have the five people line up behind her. So before you start, and we'll start the clock. So after Janice Daniels, if we could have Chek Ley, Deb Debacker, come behind her, and then as soon as she's done, just stand, sir, just stand right behind her. Thank you. Deborah Debacker, will you come next, please? Brad Kilman, will you come next? And then we'll have James Gricks. James Gricks. Okay. Mrs. Debacker, you're right in front of the gentleman in front of you. Miss Brad, you have to let Mrs. Debacker go in front of you. Okay, that's the order they signed up in the other meeting, and then Mr. Gricks was the first one that signed up here, as promised. Mrs. Daniels?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council management. When two council members tell us that there's money in the budget, that means to me that there's money in the budget. They wouldn't say it otherwise. For some unknown reason, the other five of you refuse to use that money, and that says to me that you are stuck on ideology. You're the most local public servants of all, closest to the people, and yet you side with the government complex. That's pure ideology. I have an idea to help our commercial neighbors fill their vacancies, lower their taxes, and slice through the onerous regulations and red tape that have become the hallmark of government ideologies. I have another idea: eliminate longevity pay. In fact, start charging those long-term public employees a seat charge for our allowing them to live high off the public trough for so many years. You want another special election? Last, you want another special election? I made my notes just recently. Let me see. Yeah, okay. Last week's special elections throughout the communities that surround us garnered about a 14 percent turnout. Government employees account for about 14 percent of the total workforce. Special elections are not on the top of mind for people who work in the private sector, but they are on the top of the mind for government workers. So a special election is heavily, heavily slanted to the government spending favor the side. I know that, and that is budget trickery. Another thing, I want to thank Councilman Harlack for pointing out that 10 percent, basically, of half of a compensation package really isn't 10 percent. It's 5 percent. But again, that's another government budget trick that you guys try to foist on the public, who for the most part, isn't paying attention because they're busy with their workaday worlds. So you just can't seem to be truthful, and without truth, there can be no trust. So why don't you just take 2 percent of your existing operating budget, fund the library, close this issue, and you can play your budget games with the other 98 percent. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Chek Ley.
Good evening. This is Chek Ley.
Oh, pardon me.
That's okay. First of all, I commend Councilman Slater to make the proposal earlier this evening. One thing I heard earlier this evening was that somebody was questioning the assumption of the budget in terms of expenses, you know, how much is spent in defined contribution or defined benefits, excuse me. And then later on, I heard that someone believed that there was money in the budget to pay for the library, but there was no question regarding the assumptions based on that. I would like to hear the assumptions of that. The other thing is that, you know, I also heard about the sense of trust in the council. And I think what's important for the council is to really work among yourselves to make a proposal to the citizenry and say, this is what we, the council, stand for. And I understand that you may not unanimously agree on what the proposal is going to be, and this is a democracy, and you know, in this case, majority wins. And once the council voted and whatever proposal wins, that's where the council needs to speak up and say, this is what we, where we stand behind as a council. And by the way, this is how much we're going to pay, the taxpayers need to pay to fund this proposal. I live in Troy, and I pay for service, so I have no issue of paying for service if it's the right kind of service I'm looking for. And in closing, I would say to the council members that closing the library is not an option. I suppose you all agree to that. So it's really a matter of how we're going to pay for it. And I personally agree to the point that we should have a separate millage to pay for the library and take the library, this operating budget, out of the politics of the city council in years moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Deb Debacker.
Hi.
Deborah Debacker, good evening.
I presume then, because I'm now speaking on my green card, that I get another chance to speak again for this meeting?
No.
Why not?
No, because I said you'd be first. I didn't say you'd have two scoops of it.
So you're denying me the right to speak at this meeting?
Start talking, because we have 20 people after you.
Why don't you say yes or no to my question? No?
I'm saying that you should start speaking. Yes, Mrs. Beltrameen?
Could we have an opinion from the parliamentarian, please?
Yes. Parliamentarian?
Mayor, customarily in the past, carryover of this nature would allow two opportunities to speak.
Two times? Okay. So I'll call on you again when your name comes up after it's down, I don't know, 15, 20 people. Go ahead.
Okay. First of all, I'd like to compliment Councilmen's Harlack and Fleming for the, in the previous meeting, the millions of dollars of possible cuts that they have come up with to save the library. They know that Michigan families have taken a 21.3 percent cut in their home, in their homes' incomes, and that you have not done that in this city, that you have not gone through this budget. You're just wanting to raise our taxes. I'd like to ask Mrs. Beltrameen to correct defining TCU as the people who want to cut taxes, because we are the people who want to keep the library open without raising taxes, and we are not anti-tax, but we are pro-library without raising taxes. Also, I'd like to say, if you're going to vote to put a tax increase on the August ballot, that will cost, I've heard, $96,000, $99,000. You could be funding community coalition, Troy Youth Assistance, all those groups with that special, that extra money to put on that election. So there you go. There's just how you think, you know? Don't think past your mindset to raise our taxes. I also take offense to Mr. Bloomingdale attacking Troy Citizens United constantly, especially at this previous meeting, with vile and nasty remarks. But today, he showed us what we know that he is. We know he is a Democrat Party precinct delegate, and his profound compliments and speaking and praise of Obama certainly showed that he is a member of the Tax and Spend Our Kids Into Debt Party, and most of the trust people are. So we need to know where our information is coming from. The citizens need to know that they are coming from people who want to draw your kids into debt forever. I'd also like to say, and how much time do I have?
Two minutes, 14 seconds.
I'd also like to say that at your last meeting with Ed Sarpolis, I have had people email me that they have complained, if a Campaign Finance Act complaint, to the Secretary of State. Because you have violated it by hiring Ed Sarpolis to provide advice on how to push for a yes vote for city millage increases, this practice must end immediately. Per May 7th Oakland Press, pollster Ed Sarpolis, under payment by the City of Troy, gave the Troy City Council advice on how to get yes votes for a millage increase election. This included when to have an election and what groups to get to the polls in order to get the most yes votes. Spending taxpayer dollars to advance a position in elections clearly violates the Campaign Finance Act. Mr. Sarpolis did this in addition to conducting polls for the City of Troy. We should end this practice immediately, bring this situation to the attention of the Michigan Department of State for remediation, and insist the refund of the portion of the $22,000, another thing that could have gone to keep our Troy Youth Assistance Community Coalition open, in fees. And this was reported in the Oakland Press, and I guess that's why we aren't seeing that presentation by Mr. Sarpolis on the TV, because no one can be, is seeing that on the television on your, or on the Internet. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Brad Kilman.
Hi.
Good evening.
This is Brad Kilman. I'm from Troy, Michigan, and I've lived here for over 20 years, and I am in support of the Troy Library. And Mr. Slater, you did a pretty good job tonight. You did. What I'm saying is that we do have to keep a library. A library is fun for people to go, to read books, to check stuff out. I've been going to libraries since I was a kid, and I am going to vote August 2nd to keep it open. I really am, because without a library, the residents will be left with nothing. They don't want to go anywhere else. The library is a part of our lives. It's a part of their lives. It's a part of the community's lives. It's a tradition. I mean, without a Troy library, you'd be left with nothing, nothing at all. So please, do vote August 2nd. Let's save the library. I'm not kidding, and I'm serious, and I mean it from the bottom of my heart. That's all.
Before, James, before you begin, come up, but before you start talking, I'm going to call on the next five people, and then we'll start the clock, okay? Would these people come behind him, please? Art Hammond, Thomas Burke, Paul Beck, John Verdt, and Gordon Shepke. Would those five gentlemen, please, come up in that order? Thank you. Yes, Mr. James Gricks, right?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Good evening. I'm a Troy resident of 26 years. I wanted to come to give my comments to the council for a long time. I am upset with council, most of them, and I can see why the residents don't trust the council, which has been borne out in surveys, newspaper articles, and when I talk to other people in my neighborhood. I wonder why Rochester Hills does so much with so little and we can't. They are the same shape, six miles by six mile square, less a mile, smaller than Troy, less people than Troy, the same size roughly DPW yard, same size police headquarters, same size court building, and yet they don't have the mega millions that we have in tax revenue that comes off of the Big Beaver Strip, the Oakland Mall area, different things like that. I wonder where it all is. I would like to have council have a study session where you compare Rochester Hills' budget to the Troy budget, very, very similar situation, and find out where we go wrong and where they go right. It just seems, it would help adding some credibility to this council, especially when we got the tax and spend group. I think that it would also help give some credibility to the council if you would put the checkbook online. In other locations, government entities where they are having trouble with credibility, they put the checkbook online. You could black out the names of the employees, but let us see where the money's going. I think that would be very, very interesting. I'm upset with council also because they've constantly tried to block funds for the library. We have funds that are reserved for bad times, and we've increased these reserves by millions of dollars. I think these are hard times. I think we should spend now to keep the library open. Some in council have increased reserves on almost all the accounts, little here, little there, and a lot elsewhere. Let's spend it now. General Motors Chrysler and BAE Tech Centers are close to Troy, and all of, each one of those is going to hire several thousand engineers and supervisory personnel this year and next year. There's a good chance that Troy, it could dry up the, some of the surplus, or all of the surplus housing, and we could see housing values return to a higher taxable level. I think we could see a boom in the housing market, and we've had a lot of other companies in this area that have cut their staff during the panic times of a few years ago, and now are adding back. Most of the businesses have had record profits. So I think maybe it's going to be long-term, several years or many years, maybe it's going to be 18 months or so. Once the housing market dries up, it will go north. I would like to see the library open with outsourced staff. We've outsourced, the city manager did a fantastic job outsourcing the two golf courses and the building inspectors, and then he stopped. I don't know by direction or what, but I have a feeling that if he was allowed to cut, we would actually get a tax cut too, because I see no reason why to have that bloated staff. All the different museums and nature centers that Troy have, over the last 10 years, have greatly increased their staff. That's a matter of record. The Troy population has not increased. The Troy schoolchildren have drastically decreased to the point where we're now in open enrollment, I guess. So let's get back to where we were before. When I go to the library and see all those desks that weren't there before, all those bloated staff people, I guess each one watches another person or something, I don't know how they can have so many people on the library staff. One thing that really upset me about the May 3rd council chambers meeting was you had the head of the library talking about helping people with their resumes. I wish you would ban the community center and the library from that practice, because it's at the Troy, Michigan Works, three miles away.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Art Hammond.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I've been a resident of Troy for over 15 years, and I come from 42 years in the computer business. Have a hard time dealing with emotion. I deal with facts. I don't hear any facts on the library, so I went out and started talking to people. Do you use the library? Do you go there regularly? I was amazed at the answers I got. I couldn't believe some of them. I had people tell me, my family goes there two, three times a week. I've had people tell me, I've lived here for 20 years, I've never been to the library. So then I started just keeping notes and crunching numbers and looking at that. I'd like to give you some of those numbers, and if anyone would like a copy of this, I have many copies. You have a budget figure of $2.3 million for the library. Last year, you had roughly 660,000 visitors, $3.48 a visit. You've got about 82,000 residents living in 21,000 households. Comes out to about $110 a household. Now, let me give you some real interesting things I found out. About 20 percent of the residences regularly use the library, anywhere from two, three times a week, several members of the family, to, yeah, we use it every other week, we take the kids there. That means at least three people go to the library, an adult, two kids. So I said, okay, let's take 20 percent of those residences, 4,200, multiply it by three, multiply it by 26 times every other week. Guess what that came out to? So I said, okay, now we have a lot of households where they said, only one person in the house went to the library, but they went very regularly. I said, okay, they go every other week. So I took those 4,200, multiplied it by 26. That came out to 104,000 visitors. Then I found out, there are some people that are in the library every day, and I took the number down low, because I've heard some wild numbers about how many people go to the library every day, use the computer, read the paper, whatever. I said, okay, 200 people go there five times a week, and they take two weeks vacation, so we'll use 50 weeks. Guess what? We've got another 50,000 visitors. Now, those three groups of people accounted for 481,600 visits. That's 73 percent of the visitors, and it only represents 40 percent of the population or 40 percent of the households. No wonder you can't get a millage passed. 60 percent of the households don't want a millage. Why do you keep bringing it up for an election? Your people have told you, they don't want a millage passed. Now, I'd be, I'd be this upset if you wanted a millage for the golf course, and believe me, I spend over $500 a year at the city golf courses, but I wouldn't approve of a millage for the golf course. Let the people that use it pay for it. So I took that, and I put some numbers to it. You want probably $110 from each household in your millage vote. So if the people that use it regularly as a household were to pay an extra $10 a month, guess what? You'd gather $966,000. Now, the household where only one person uses it, you'd gather $630,000. And if the occasional use person, and I said, okay, he uses it once a month, he'll pay $5 for each visit. $60, hey, he'd just save $50 a year.
Thank you, sir. Your five minutes is up.
Would you like a handout?
If you'll give them to the clerk, she'll give them to us. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Burke, will you come forward? Thomas Burke?
Hi. Councilman McGuinness, at the earlier meeting, made a comment that I caught as I was running out the door, that said something like this. I've seen nothing here in all these numbers presented at the budget sessions that shows me where these dollars for the library would come from. Is that surprising? These are the numbers that the four of you asked the city management to give you, and they gave you the numbers to support a tax increase, and then you're surprised that it supports a tax increase. This gentleman here asked for, who's challenging the assumptions? Well, I'll challenge the assumptions. The budget expenses are padded, and you know it. Go look at your last 10 years' financial statements. Every single year, the actual expenses come in millions of dollars less than the budget. There is not a single year where the actual expenses in the general fund exceed the budget. The budget is padded in the normal course. Factually, you cannot contest that. Second, you've acknowledged you don't have the information to know what's going on. Why did you continue the budget sessions? You have contracts for the majority of your employees being negotiated. Those will end up with significantly different numbers. The 10 percent supposed concessions from the police department by themselves would fund the library, but that's not known. Why is that not known? Because the sessions are before the due date of the contract negotiations. Wow, isn't that surprising? Third, you've offered golden parachute early retirement to a number of employees. The due date for them to finalize that is after the date that you're passing a budget. The people here that are, your administration may not even be here on July 1st. Wouldn't that be nice to know? Wouldn't it be nice to know how many employees you have in order to figure out what the budget for next year would be? I think that would be interesting, but I guess you don't care about that. So, so you're right. You don't have the information to know how to fund the library, because that's the information that's been given to you. Now, Councilman Kerwin, you even, two weeks ago, asked that question when, when you asked Mr. Lamorato, after he made his general fund presentation. You said, are there any concessions in these numbers? And the answer was, uh, yes and no. But he never told you how much. But the question that you have to ask is, that you didn't ask is a follow-up. That is a very important assumption, and why did you have to ask that question? That should have been an absolute part of the presentation to tell you what the foundation of these numbers are. The answer is, they don't want you to know, and you weren't supposed to ask, and they didn't answer. They didn't tell you there was a million bucks or 500,000. You got no response, and you didn't follow up because you didn't care, because the answer drives what you've been after. drives what you've been after all along, and that's a big tax increase. I've said that in 20 meetings. It's all come to this date, the Schilling legacy of leaving office with a massive tax increase. It's now two years in the making, and why are we talking about it in August? Because if you let it go to November, people have choices. In November, the Kempin charter amendment to fund the library with no tax increase will be on the ballot, and a majority of the council seats will also be up for election. And the new council will fund the library without a tax increase, and that's a choice that you don't want the voters to have. So Councilman Slater, last week, when the thought of August 16th, the August election came up, your comment was, "That's not going to happen." What woodshed did you get taken out to in the last week? How did you have that big of a change of mind in less than a week from absolutely won't happen to you're now the one that's proposing it? I don't get it. I don't get it, except it goes to the point of, "I love taxes." This four group, thank you very much.
The next speaker is Tom Burke. The next speaker after Tom Burke is Paul Beck. Remember, folks, we've got to get to all these people here. Go ahead.
Thank you. First off, we're going to fund an 800K redoing of the pond, but we're not going to have a library. The transit center, but no library. No union concessions. The city manager has said numerous times that he's in negotiations for almost a year now, and we have no information whatsoever. The other hidden secret is the cost of running the transit center once it's built, if it's built. People have spoken twice. No new taxes. Thank you.
The next speaker, before you start, Mr. Burke, I'm going to call, oh, no, Mr. Shepke is behind you. I didn't see him. Go ahead, Mr. Burke.
Thank you for allowing me some time. I'd like to, two months ago, I asked about the question of the police budget and why it was increased so much. I asked Councilwoman Beltrameany, I asked Mayor Schilling, I asked Dean Slater, and I asked John Lamarrato. I got the same answer from Mr. Lamarrato that you got tonight. Well, duh. If you people are depending on people, on those kind of answers, then you have, you're only yourselves to blame when people don't listen to you. Because he should have been prepared to give you an answer. I don't know how much warning he needs, how much pre-warning he needs. Mr. Fleming, again tonight, way back when, in the February election, I asked him why he said no to the 1.9 millage, and he said he didn't feel like they had done, you had done due diligence. Tonight, I listened to him say, "There's money out there." Without anything telling us where the money is, show it to me. How long does it take you to do due diligence, Mr. Fleming? How many years do we wait? You should have had a program out there. It's the same thing I asked Mr. Horlak a long time ago, and he said, "Well, that's Mr. Zurlak's job." Both of you keep saying, "There's all kinds of money here," but no one comes forth with a real program with real dollars. We all just sit there pointing fingers and saying, "Well, it's there, it's there." And then people feed off that. No, it doesn't work. One other thing, please, council, do not go with a one-year millage for the library. I don't know that 10 is an excessive, but a one-year proposal, we don't want to go through this year after year after year. That was probably the worst proposal I've ever heard. I brought a little prop here so I could keep Mr. Horlak and Mr. Fleming's attention because I know that a dollar goes a long ways with them. I think it's time that we get this settled once and for all. You guys cannot equivocate on this any longer. Let's just do it, okay? Thank you.
Before Mr. Shepke starts, I'm going to call the next five speakers behind. Deb Debacker, Janice Daniels, Richard Peters, Brad Kilman, and Ivan Johnson.
Mayor and council, I appreciate the opportunity to come here tonight and express my opinions. Most of you know pretty much where I stand on the library issue. I think it's pretty despicable the way the library's been held hostage all this time, and this council hasn't sat down, and I've expressed that view before, and tried to come up with some kind of consensus decision. And what I experienced at the meeting before this really wasn't trying to come up with a consensus. A consensus, to me, is where we have across-the-board cuts, where we try to balance a budget without our tax increases. That, to me, is a consensus, but I really think that the library is just the tip of the issue. I think the way the Downtown Development Authority's been conducting itself and with their budgets and stuff like that, and the way they've spent money, and I know that we have people on this council that said on the Downtown Development Authority, they have a good chance of going into default in just a few years, and if you don't think that that's going to affect Troy's tax rating, bond rating, you're sadly mistaken. Even though if they were independently insured, it certainly would give Troy another black eye that they don't need at this time. Another thing that I really can't believe this administration and this council's doing everything they can to come to some kind of agreement when we were considering, I think it was three sessions ago, Mr. Lamarrato said that somebody asked him a question because I had brought up, I think our library's a lot more important than the transit center. He said the money for the transit center, the 1.3 billion has, millions, excuse me, has been put in different funds and is allocated to go in different directions, so that money can't be used for the library. Does this mean that we have money, another 1.3 million in the budget? Maybe I'm mistaken or something. I need to get some clarification so we can, well, okay, we dispense of that money, we can come up with another 1.3 million for this debacle called the Transit Center over behind Kroger's. And then we're involved in a lawsuit with Sacra because they're saying we didn't fulfill our agreements on the property, so we're going to fight a long, prolonged court battle on that. And because Birmingham dropped out, we have to redesign the building and make a smaller building out of it because we're not going to have their 700,000. Either that, or we've got to kick in that extra 700,000 on our own. There's no monies to maintain a staff in our library. We're going to build a boondoggle over there behind Kroger's, maybe. We have a bunch of money tied up over there and a bunch of headaches, and we have no maintenance or no staff for over there. I think it's disgusting. I think this council has money for what it wants to have money for, and I agree that there is a padded budget here. And I think that this needs, we need to get some figures from this administration and from staff, and this council has to sit down and do some serious work trying to get this solved. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is, let me see, oh, Deb Debacker, yes, come up. It's Deb Debacker, then Janice Daniels, then Richard Peters, then Brad Kilman, then Ivan Johnson.
Okay. I brought up another thought on the August elections, other than it's $96,000 you could use to fund some of the things that you have cut back. Back when Mr. Kempin was taken to court because he wanted to have an August election to keep the library open, Ms. Bloom told the court that it was too expensive to have an August election or a special election in May or whatever those things are, and this, now you changed your mind? Now you can afford a special election for something? If 67% of the people said in the survey they don't trust you, now I would say it's going to be 99% don't trust you because you change your story constantly. First of all, I want to say again that too many questions were brought up in that last study session for you to put any kind of tax increase on the ballot in August. We haven't any, you still don't know what the actuary report's going to say, and no one really knows if you put the 123109 actuary report numbers in the 2012 and 2013 budget. You don't say, no one knows if you did that. You still haven't told us why our police department costs three times as much as the Rochester Hills Police Department. You still don't know the amount of concessions from employee unions. We still don't know if you have, are going to cut the car allowances for all the people who get car allowances. We still don't understand why it could cost the library $300,000 to take care of 120 computers. And I specifically couldn't believe it when the head of the library said that you're allowed to Skype in the library, that we're paying for Skyping in the library. I mean, that's kind of excessive. So those are just some of the ideas that I've brought forth, again, for you to be reminded that you can afford the library, and it's a really bad idea, again, to have a separate dedicated millage because if we ever get into a problem where we're really, really in a lot of problems here in Troy, which we hope never comes, we will, our council will lose the ability to move money around for where it's needed, and that is a really bad idea to run your government like that with separate pots in your house, and you can't pay one when the other one needs it. So I think it's a really bad idea. You should not make this a separate millage. Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Janice Daniels again.
Good evening, again. I wonder if we could do a citizen survey and find out how many people go to Chicago in any given year from the Detroit area. I think in my lifetime, I've been to Chicago twice, and I know I'm probably a little short on the culture side, but I don't think we need a transit center to get to Chicago. I think we need a library that's open so we can just ride our bikes or drive our cars and spend $4 a gallon in gas to get to the library and read some books. I just wanted to share with you a couple of core legislative principles that a gentleman handed to me. Ethical conduct. It is essential that all government-elected and appointed officials abide by a code of ethical conduct. State and municipal officials must adhere to standards of conduct that promote transparency and public confidence in our system of governance. Ethics provisions should preserve options for locally developed and adopted ethical standards as may be provided for in local charters or ordinances. And local control, preservation of constitutional power given to the people of Michigan's communities to govern themselves in local matters must be carefully preserved. The powers of home rule were granted in the Michigan Constitution of 1908 and were reaffirmed and strengthened in the 1963 Constitution. The strength in high standards that prevail today in local government in Michigan come from this long tradition of self-determination. Citizens adopt charters to govern themselves and elect municipal officials to resolve significant issues in the public interest which best meet local needs and conditions. In order to ensure that communities can continue to provide a wide range of needed and wanted services, state and federal legislation must uphold the principles of local control and ensure that costs are not shifted to local taxpayers, nor burdensome liabilities or unfunded mandates be placed upon municipalities. Functions or activities required by the state or federal government must include funding for implementation. Municipalities must also be given the flexibility to consolidate. They must be given incentives for consolidation, and current laws need to be streamlined and made more flexible for any communities that choose to consolidate. Maybe we should look more at consolidation in our communities than taxing the people and the businesses that are trying to survive in this economic climate. Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Brad Kilman again.
Yeah, good evening. I don't think we need a transit center here in Troy. I mean, we're pretty off without it. I mean, the library's the best thing. Why close it down over a transit center? You have one in Royal Oak, that's fine, but if you want to have a transit center, and I agree with what this guy said, you can have it by Kroger's, you can have it around the Troy area, but not when a library is open. I mean, no, it would hurt the community. Keep the library open. Throw dog is second. That's it.
Mr. Peters, we'll hear from you again.
Yeah, hi, council. I don't think you're a bunch of crooks. I think you're all well-intentioned people, and I know you work hard. I'm going to make a speech here that I don't want to make, but I have to. It's about Bin Laden. I know that he's not the most favored people, person around, but you know, if it wasn't for Bin Laden, that Bush recession probably would have happened six years earlier, and I often wonder if Saudi Arabia invaded America 200 years ago, what his opinion of this man would be. I believe that Bin Laden was a hero to some people because he stood up to the big bully who's trying to subjugate and steal the oil fields or subjugate the oil fields abroad, all in the name of anti-Semitism and rich Sunni-style religion. I believe that when it comes to human rights, hypocrisy is the word that comes to mind, especially when you consider that Israel is still stealing Arab land, and Saudi Arabia has invaded Bahrain and nothing is said. I also believe that the war machine that's cranked up today is out of control, especially when you look at the way the countries like Libya, Syria, Bahrain, and Yemen have had a UN treaty either sabotaged or nonexistent. In conclusion, I see nothing but hypocrisy and xenophobia that may appeal to the rednecks and the gun lovers in Pontiac and Waterford and the SUVs and the 250 crowd, 250s, who go up north to their meccas and their villas on the weekends. Please, spare me the parade. I think I'll skip this one, if you don't mind. Thank you very much.
Next, Mr. Johnson. Before you start, I'm going to come up, but don't start. We won't start the clock yet. I'm going to call the next five. Okay, Vanilla, Ken Demery, John Tagle, Bruce Bloomingdale, Sharon McDonald, Dan Brake, and Neil Yazansky. Would those people come up in that order, please? Go ahead.
Is there any member of this council or administration back in the year 2006 could have foreseen the economic situation we have today? I don't think so. And during the study session, you're talking about spending somewhere in the neighborhood of $100,000 that we don't have for a special election to decide a library or roads or one or both or something or other. One thing I think we can say for sure, there are more Troy residents that use our roads than there are that use our libraries. The notion of a special dedicated millage, as far as I'm concerned, you're taking an action similar to that that our federal government seems to be taking, where you just kick the can down the road and you push it off into the future someplace. I don't think you should consider any way, shape, or form, any kind of a special dedicated millage. I think you'll be shirking your duty if you just kick the can down the road. Provide a level of service for all of the desired items within your budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Vanilla. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Vanilla, as you might recall from the last meeting. Please give one last chance to vote for the library. I promise I'll pass the word V-O-T-E to all the citizens of Troy. The library is really, really, really important to me and to the librarians of Troy, and I request for you to keep it open. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tagle, I think you have a hard act to follow.
It is a tough act to follow, but as I was thinking, sitting back there thinking about, really, what do I want to say to you guys? You know what? I think you guys have been doing a great job. You've been working hard at this thing. You don't always agree, but I think you've been really trying. And quite honestly, I'm a little bit ashamed of some of the people that come up here and take shots at you guys. It's a tough job that you have. But you know, that young lady that was just before me really kind of set the tone for what I do want to say to you. It's about the future. I'm a business owner. I know how tough times have affected my business, and if I was to have put my head in the sand thinking that, you know what, I don't have to reinvest, I don't have to do anything for the future, I'd be out of business. to reinvest, I don't have to do anything for the future, I'd be out of business. So, I want to just encourage you to stay the course. Think about the future. There are probably options out there with regard to the library that haven't been discussed, or if they have been discussed, they've been discussed at a very low level. For example, there are, there's industry, there's education, there's public sector. We're all looking for better ways to do what we do in more economic ways. I think there are possibilities for partnerships to start forming. And we think about libraries. We're not talking about the bricks and mortar that we have back here on the city center right now. We're talking about the library of the future. There's a lot of opportunities, I think, for a lot of organizations to come to the table and to say, hey, how can we do it differently? How can we partner and make this a community that we've all been proud of at one point? I mean, that's what built Troy, was some forward thinking. So, I know the times are tough right now for everyone, but I just ask you to consider thinking forwardly, keep positive, and you guys are the leaders. We look to you to make decisions and to move forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tagle. Bruce Bloomingdale is next.
I wish I was that articulate. I'd like to go to work for that guy, the speaker that just spoken before me. Some general comments. Mary, I deeply appreciate the prayer that you let us in. I love this city. I love the people in it. I've lived here a long time. I've got my life wrapped up in this city. And I appreciate it. Mayor, I thank you for the courageous leadership regarding, that you've exhibited regarding the future of the library. I use the library very little, and I realize and appreciate the value of the library as a part of this city, along with the police department, the community center, the DPW, the golf course, and the other things that make this city what it is. You know, I have a unique perspective of this city I don't think anybody else in this room can lay claim to. I've stood on the top of one Detroit center. I was under construction, looked north up 75, watched traffic come down and make that loop, go east and then turn and go south into the city again. I'll tell you what, it's a beautiful city in so many respects. Now, while I'm speaking, I'd like to ask the city manager to please look up the provision in the city charter that requires the city to provide me with all the services that I get and I pay for them. Can you do that? Obviously not. There is no such provision. My dad taught me that you have to pay for the things you want, including city services. That's a lesson my no-tax-for-any-reason friends need to learn and teach their children. Nothing is for free. I find it amusing that we have so many experts sitting in the audience behind me, including myself. We've got an opinion on everything and we don't hesitate to express it, and yet, there are some of us that can't understand a simple premise. There's nothing for free. You get exactly what you pay for. We will have exactly the kind of city we're willing to pay for. I don't understand people that can sit through nine hours of budget hearings and come to the conclusion that we've got all the money we need or we can just find it somewhere. It baffles me. Like the previous speaker, you council people, the seven of you, I think you're doing a reasonably good job under some extremely tough circumstances. And that statement applies to each and every one of you, even though I may disagree with you. Now, democracy is a messy and noisy business endeavor. I'm amazed in listening to the previous speakers before me that any of you got enough votes to hold a seat you're holding. You two were just recently erected. How did that happen? So, I sort of enjoy this. We can call each other names. I was built for this kind of crap. I'm old enough to understand that there are people that if they can't dazzle you with brilliance, they're gonna try to baffle you with bullshit. You always know it when you hear them spouting numbers after numbers after numbers, and every time you go to look at the numbers that they're talking about, they don't add up and don't make sense. We got a nine-year-old grandson that understands these things better than that. You know, you get what you pay for. This city took a long time to build. I've lived in it 40 years. I was encouraged by friends of mine to come here because of what they saw and what it was. With the school district and the vision that our founding fathers had in, developed, our land use plan, land usage plan, whatever the title for it is, has made us. Now, here we are, for the first time in our history, under tough circumstances that I recall, I mean, we've gone through, I've been through a few recessions, but nothing like this. And you wouldn't believe there's been anything done right in the 50-some years that this city has existed as a, as an entity. Come on, get with it. You know, and I'm gonna encourage you, have the courage. You council people, have the courage to do what you see as being right. If you have a split vote, you have a split vote. Let the voters sort that out. That's what we're here listening to you for.
Don't forget your water there, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Next, we'll hear from Sharon McDonald.
I think I needed his water. I have been trying to help save the library for a year now, and it's very exhausting. It's exhausting because of meetings like this where people intentionally are exhausting the people of Troy, telling them that bad things are happening, unlawful things are happening, money's being hidden. What they're really doing is they're moving the goalposts all the time. And I don't know anything about football, but I know what that means. It means that they come up with a fact that's not true, so it's not a fact, and then by the time you chase it down and figure out what the truth is, they've moved on to the next bit of disinformation. And I know because I've been chasing this football down this field for a year now. Last year, when I started, there was $2 million of undesignated park funds, and that was our problem. And it was on their website, it was everywhere, these anti-taxers. When we find that $2 million of undesignated funds, then we can save the library. Except it had already been moved elsewhere in the budget. It wasn't there, it didn't exist. We pointed it out, then they moved on to the next point. Okay, now Mr. Zerlag, he gets more money than the governor of the state of Michigan, a higher salary. It's crazy. But it's also not true, because they're comparing his entire package to a salary figure. Then there was the funding of the park in Rochester, at Rochester Roads and Big Beaver. Two million bucks, we could save the library. We proved that wasn't true, that that was DDA money, and that we can't spend that for library, for the library or any other city. And if we don't spend it on things like that park, it's just gonna go back to the state anyway. Another, another little sleight of hand that just changed the topic for a little while. Mr. Howlak yet, last year, said he supported the library millage, but not the one we wrote, Proposal 1, because it was an independent library, and that's no good. So, today, okay, fine, you defeated Proposal 1 by 600 votes with all this nonsense. So, today, okay, we'll make it designated funds just for the library. But no, that's not good enough either. Now, we've got money hiding somewhere. Cool. But every time you chase that little pot of gold they're talking about, it disappears, disappears. And I'm kind of tired of chasing this. I'm tired of chasing this disinformation. And so, the last thing they can do now is say, oh, these people are Democrats, they're tax-and-spend liberals. They're throwing all these ridiculous words around, but the words that you don't hear from them are words like "public good," that maybe it's not bad that our library helps people find jobs so they can pay their property taxes and they can help fund the things that are for all of us. Some guy's talking about massive tax increase, one mil. How many cities in this town just passed four mils, six mils? What kind of ridiculous nonsense is this? So, I want people to know that if this millage proposal gets on the ballot, you're gonna hear a lot of this crap, and you gotta start paying attention. You've gotta look up the truth. You've gotta find out what's the reality. And you've gotta think about what's good for our community and the public good and our children. Before the meeting at 6 o'clock, we had 60 people, moms and children, come out in support of the library. They couldn't stay here, they can't stop waiting until 9 or 10 o'clock to all speak. But we have the same tired old people who just, like the thing, the perfect thing about the public good, oh, we gotta get rid of that Skype. Well, first of all, Skype is free. And second of all, I believe what they were talking about is using Skype so that family members of people in the services can talk to their soldiers who are fighting for this country. Is there, is there any lower you can all go? I, I guess you can, because I've seen it before. People, look up information on Trust, look up information on Keep Troy Strong, look up information on Save Troy Library from last year. All of these sites have FAQs, they have information going back a year. Find the facts, don't listen to this garbage. Please, save the library and save Troy.
Neil Yazansky, next.[1281.14][1281.14](applause) Actually, it's supposed to be Dan Brake and then Neil, so, sorry. No, come on. Gotta be fair, that's the way the names are.
Thank you, ma'am. First of all, there's a gentleman, at least one person, trying to sign up and maybe more who haven't been able to sign up, and there's no one to help them?
I'm sure the person who would help is listening and will help that person if he'd go back out there.
Thank you. I have several responses to things that have been said here by earlier speakers. None of us think that we should have a library for free. Some of us think that we were already paying taxes that included a library for years and for decades, and then somehow magically one day, the library portion just disappeared. And that's one of our objections, that somehow the library was singled out to bear the brunt without other, and the library's budget, as I understand it, went from about 3.9 million to 2.7 or 8 million and now to 2.3 million. So, in the course of two years, the library's budget has been chopped in half, while other departments very significantly, those with union employees particularly, seem to have been singled out for increases even, if not, some have been held steady. A gentleman, just a couple of speakers before me, said that he thought you were doing a tough job, and I agree that you are. I respect that each of you is trying your best to do the job as you see it. I do not, however, hold any of the other speakers in contempt, or I'm not ashamed of them, as he suggested. I think this is a terrific American process, and I'm proud to see everyone participating in helping shape whatever the ultimate decision is gonna be here. Now, just to point a finger, one of you earlier in the budget meeting dared to suggest that somehow there were two groups active on this library issue, one of the groups being the anti-tax group and the other being the pro-library group. I object, quite frankly, since the Troy Citizens Union has been the only group consistently present here in the months since last fall's election advocating for both keeping the library open and doing it without a tax increase. It's hard to imagine, quite frankly, someone will challenge me, but I think it's easy to say that the library would be closed right now if it weren't for the TCU adamantly holding forth on keeping it open in the last few weeks. 21.3% is the number, I'm sorry, is the amount of reduction in family income in Michigan. Some, Janice Daniels said 14% of the people of Michigan are in families employed by government workers. I hadn't heard that number before, but obviously some, some of you had the advantage of government jobs and now have the advantage of government pensions and have not been at risk for that reduction. That actually means that the rest of us out here have had a bigger reduction on average than 21.3%. And yet, your best solution is to raise our taxes. I don't think it calculates. In terms of the city's financial situation, you all swore in court just a couple of months ago that the city could not afford to keep the library open at its present level, you said, because it would mean laying off 1/3 of the city's police department. I've proved to you here several times that that was a lie. In fact, the number would have been something under 8% based on today's calculation that the library really only costs 1.7 million, not 2.3 million a year to keep it open. So, there was that. And then separately, you said, the city could not afford a $90,000 election on the Kempin ballot proposal. The court responded that based on the city's holding forth an argument that it would be fiscally unsound and financially distressing, that you therefore would not have to follow the Kempin petition. That's what the court said. And yet, here you are, you lied about the impact on the police department, and now, apparently, you're lying about the cost of the election because you're advocating having an August election, one that you said the taxpayers could not afford. If you're gonna have that election, it doesn't cost you anything to add a couple of more questions on that ballot. One of the questions you could add is the Kempin petition language. The court order doesn't prohibit you from putting it there, it only said you didn't have to put it there. A third question I'd like to see you put on the ballot is this discussion about the police department. You told us in the earlier budget meeting, I'm sorry, it wasn't you, it was Mr. Zerlag and I think Chief Mayor, pointed out that there were several reasons why Troy's police department should cost more than the $9 million that Rochester Hills costs, but we cost $18 million more. And what I heard was we got eight miles of freeway patrol and two shopping malls. Give us a vote on whether that's worth the extra $18 million and what could the city do otherwise with that kind of money? I have nothing against the Troy Police Department, I think they do a great job. Nobody has explained to me $18 million worth of difference. Thank you for the extra second.
Yazansky. And Neil, before you start, I'm gonna call the next five speakers. Tom Krant, Ed Kempin, Alan Huderek, Donald Chang, and Mr. Geiger. Go ahead, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Members of the City Council, esteemed members of the City Clerk's office, as well as all the other present employees, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. Boy, you do have a tough job, and, you know, I do, as Mr. Patterson said, I really appreciate the service that you guys do, even if I don't agree with you, because you spend a lot of time away from your family, away from the things that you love, and, you know, even the folks who come up here, you know, I definitely, you know, disagree with them, but I think that in their own way, they're trying to make the best of their city, and, you know, for that, I salute them. But I think they're, you know, I've been trying to keep a bit closer eye on the city budget and how things work, you know, as I've gotten, you know, more concerned about the direction of the city. So, I'd like to take this opportunity to address a few things that I've heard from other people here. Someone asked about outsourcing and why we aren't outsourcing more people, and, you know, seems like a good question, and, you know, people want to know that. I think I have a pretty good answer, actually. I heard Mr. Zerlag describe the process where they would basically put employees and they would allow them to bid against a private contractor, and they'd say, okay, for example, the planning department, excuse me, the building inspections department, they did a contract process and saw how much it would cost the employees to run that, and then they did the same for private bids to run that, and they ended up outsourcing that. Likewise, with the capital projects, they outsourced a lot of that work, and then they came to the conclusion that the remaining city staff could actually manage projects in a less expensive fashion than outsourcing it further. Even the library, I personally would be against outsourcing the library, but there's a group called the LSSI. Frankly, they don't have a very good reputation, from what I hear, in Santa Clara, California is one library they took over. But they asked, in a published report, the head of the LSSI, if she thought that she could run the Troy Public Library for the amount of money, I believe it was the 2.3 million, the 55-hour, the reduced amount. She said, no. She said, we couldn't even do that. So, because we rely so heavily on volunteers already to keep those open. And so, you know, there's been some other people who have had some, you know, interesting concerns, and I really, I urge them to think very carefully. I really, I urge them to think very carefully, because we're coming upon a moment where, I hope that the council presents the city of Troy frankly with a do-over, because I think there was, there are people who are trying to subvert the process through confusion, as I understand it. And I'm not trying to cast dispersion on people's motives, but that's just how I understand it, by making it not just one vote, but for four tax increases. So I think it would be a great opportunity to just get, have the City Council present a question, a single question, I can see why there'd be some wisdom to that. If you open that up to everybody's ideas, hey, I got a few ideas how the city should be run too, it won't surprise you to hear. But I think that would really confuse things. So, you know, all of you, I really urge you to look at this opportunity that you have, it's really one last chance, I think, to save a resource that I truly treasure, the Troy Public Library. And I don't, you know, Councilman Fleming and Councilman Harlock, you can't, you know, you talk about other ways to do it, but you have to work within the confines of the people you're serving on council with. And so I think to talk about other ways that you'd like to do it are, at this point in time, moot, because those ways didn't come to pass. And so I hope you guys take the opportunity to take one last vote. It seems like this will be the last best chance to save the library by giving the people a choice, you know? If you catch a lot of flak for asking people to decide on a vote, you know, I think that is, you know, that's how democracy works, and I know that we've had two elections in the past, but that only is valid for that time of the election, and people's minds change. I know I've talked to people, and their minds have changed, and if they had a chance, I think that we would do it again, but don't take my word for it. I encourage you all to put something on the ballot, and we can decide on voting. Thanks again for your time, have a great day.
Next we'll hear from Tom Krant.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You've all done a lot of work and all offered solutions to save our library, and I appreciate that. Some I don't agree with, but the point is you've all worked toward a solution, which is wonderful. The important thing, though, that I want to express is, whatever solution you offer, make sure you back it up with real solid numbers, not generalities, not, I'm going to take it out of here if the police or some union lowers their wages or benefits. Do it on the specific numbers you have now, because you've got to vote on a budget next week. And to let you know what my vote would be, seeing all the numbers that we have and all the proposals I've heard, is put 1 mil on the ballot, let the voters decide if they want a full-service library like I would like to have, let them have the kind of vibrant library that I've come to enjoy. So, basically, that's it, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Kempin, Ed Kempin.
Good evening.
Good evening, thank you, Mayor, Council. I'm going to talk a little bit about money. First of all, according to Lori Bloom and her actions, as you've already heard, there's no money in the budget for special elections, we can't afford it. Paragraph 24 from the city's lawsuit against our petition, that was served on me the week of Christmas last year. Since the estimated costs of a February special election, assuming precincts could be consolidated, is $90,000. If council were compelled to call a February election, which was unnecessary, but she didn't point that out to the judge, because you could have adopted it, if city council were compelled to call a February election, this would be a significant cost to the Troy Think about what you're asking to do again. Is it, you can't afford it if it's your agenda, or you can't afford it if it's the people's agenda? That's serious. I also wanted to point out a little thing called the city charter. I think we all took an oath of office. I took it once when I was serving on the Board of Zoning Appeals. You've taken it when you decided to serve on council. I'm not quite sure what it really means, but it's a little bit awkward, but it's right here in section W. So it's section 2.2W, the establishment and maintenance of a public library. We're not exactly sure what that really means, so we're trying to make that a little clearer with our charter petition that we're undergoing right now, which is very similar to the last petition campaign I just ran. I just wanted to point that out to you. Transparency is important here. I also wanted, I didn't have, I won't take as much time as the other ed, talking about surveys, but a while ago on Facebook, this person published something, what do Troy shoppers think about a library? And they polled a little over 200 of our residents. Assuming the library had to stay open, would you prefer to increase taxes to maintain the current level of services or reduce services to match the available budget, or both? And 72% said to reduce services to match the diminishing budget. 18% said to increase taxes and maintain the current level of services. 10% said they would choose both increase taxes and reduce services to keep our library open. There's more details in that survey, but I don't want to waste our time, that's the most relevant fact here. According to November 28th Free Press, Troy incomes have dropped 15% since 1999 in inflation-adjusted According to Fox News, I'm not sure the date, but it's around December, they reported that 68% of communities have already cut public safety costs. Well, what I see in this call for a special election is the calling or the last whaling of a lame duck. And, of course, when there's a lame, you know, maybe it's time to cook the duck, and in fact, if you have a tax proposal on there in August, I might suggest a follow-on carve-out from the general budget to accommodate it, because it's really not necessary. Our public doesn't want it. I just wanted to remind you, these are all signatures of Troy residents. What do you think? That's all.
Next we'll hear from Ellen Houderek. Ellen? Good evening.
Good evening, Council. I keep hearing the nickel and diming in the line-by-line discussions, and why can't our police department be run the same way as Rochester's? They do it a third less, well, ours would be a third less. I've done my homework. I don't like the idea, seriously? Is that what we're shooting for? The term I learned in college, in addition to my accounting classes, I took a lot of econ, and the term was opportunity cost. And what's missing in this discourse is what is the opportunity cost of being penny-wise and pound foolish? And it's huge. The cynicism, the sarcasm, the divisiveness, it's killing this community. It's killing it. Some of them, some of these folks seem to enjoy it, they have their clique, it's fun. It's not fun for the rest of us who are trying to protect our home values and the esprit de corps in the community. These are conversations that shouldn't even have to go on, these are decisions that should be made here, the Milage cap that the gentleman before me, and several others on council brought forth a couple of years ago. It's the root cause of this madness, this is madness. It's ridiculous. $90,000 you're whining about at this point? Well, guess where we are now? We have to bridge the library to keep it open. So, you wait till November, that bridge costs money. What Councilwoman Slater was proposing was a compromise. It's cheaper to have the election now in August and only bridge the library to August. I've done my homework. So I see what the campaign thing will be. If you do August, they're going to say that was a waste of money. Two bucks and some change per household to run that election in August, it's a lot more to bridge the library further. The fact is, I keep finding facts that they put out there as facts are not facts. I saw myself portrayed on a website today as being a former librarian. Not smart enough. Nope, I've never been a librarian. It was put on there as fact. I now doubt every single thing I hear from this group. It's toxic, what is going on. Councilwoman Slater presented a compromise. Yeah, I'd love the roads in there, too. Councilwoman Corwin, I'm with you, I know the emails you got, I heard the whining, too. Maybe the compromise is, we just do the library, because this community can't seem to handle one more, more than one thought at a time. If the big bag of money shows up, the money that everybody's hiding, then use it for the roads. The snowplowing comes into factor in the winter. The library is a factor now, right now. We have hit the wall, we're all bruised from it. I'm shaking with anger. I'm an emotional person, I had somebody criticize me about that. I think what's missing from some of the decision-making is the emotion, is the soft side of what leading, leading involves. I'm getting tons of emails with people who are ready to see leadership, and they've had it with this pettiness. There is a groundswell, there is a groundswell, and I want to tell those of you who are struggling to know if it exists, it's there. It's there. It's a positive tsunami of people who recognize this is go time. We're here for you, we want to support you. This is it. I grew up in a community where this happened, and we missed our opportunity, and that community is not a place where you would move. The very same thing is happening here, I am experiencing and living history repeating itself. I own a home and pay for it. It's a key part of my investment portfolio, and I expect it to be protected to the best of your ability. I'm frustrated, and I know others are, too. I'm also still hopeful, what you presented tonight was beautiful, I couldn't believe it, kind of just dissipated on that table. Seize it, please, please. Thank you.
Next we'll hear from --
[applause]
Next we'll hear from Mr. Geiger.
Don Chang.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, yes.
Don Chang.
Don Chang, then Mr. Geiger, then Christian Theodorantis, and then Sandra Shemhead. So if those people would line up in that order, please, sorry, I didn't, missed you, must be 9:52. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council, this is, this is not about the library, okay? So just relax. This isn't about for or against, this isn't should we or shouldn't we, this is about something that's pretty important to many of us. I would have addressed my comments to you next week, but unfortunately, I'm going to be out of the country, so I'll address them today. On Monday, the 30th of May, at 11 o'clock in the morning, Major General Kirk Stein, the commanding general of the Tacoma Lifecycle Management Command, will address the community of Troy right out front at our annual Troy Memorial Day observance. And I would encourage each of you, and each of those of you listening in the audience on TV, whenever you watch this, to please join us. It's a very, very important time to recognize and remember those Americans who gave their last full measure of devotion right here in front of City Hall. Thank you.
My comment is directed to the entire community of Troy. This community, without a library as it has had, is the equivalent of driving down the highway in a Lincoln without wheels, or fighting a war by sending into battle your army without weapons.
Thank you, Mr. Geiger. Christian, and then is Sandra, is here? Okay, thank you.
Good evening. I'm not quite sure why I decided to address the council. I'm not sure how many people would listen, I'm just watching the body language, some people do, some people don't, I guess. This is my, only my second meeting that I attended. The first meeting, I was intimidated with the chief of police for clapping. But I decided that made me, persuaded me to come back and see, I do agree with one of the previous speakers, this is the democracy at its best, or the democratic process, rather. I don't, didn't have a lot of facts about the library one way or another, that's why I started trying to gather information. There's a lot of information out there, as you probably are aware, for and against, relevant, irrelevant, false, accurate.